Good morning, everybody. It is Tuesday, August twelfth. And my name is Don Swayker. We'll go ahead and call the Jackson County Board of Supervisors meeting to order. To my left, Mike Sinus.
Morning.
To my right, Nim Feigl.
Morning.
Bjorn from I T, Lisa from the Auditor's Office, Luann in the back, our Executive Assistant, we have Brittany from the Press, and Jayden Chekko from the Center. Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
Good morning. Uh, first item on our agenda is for the fiscal year twenty seven T SIP application. So three of these years, we apply for destination lights as well as portable stoplight trailers. So for fiscal year twenty seven, uh, they have paid for their new August fifteenth. And this year proposing a submittal for an upcoming road project that's on our five-year program, but for safety improvements on that project for three hundred ninety-fifth Avenue. Part of it is to put paved shoulders and round shoulder rumbles on it as well as centerline rumbles. But then also, uh, realign a portion of it. So if you recall, we submitted this also for a race grant that we were unsuccessful for. Just taking that same scope and just applying it for T SIP to try to realign that horizontal curve. I don't know. Ran off a couple of the movies, but so where that reading limit, it's right near the intersection of three ninety-fifth and three oh eight street. There was an intersection where we had the destination light stalled. Right now, that horizontal curve for better sight distance, uh, because that is a proposed speed limit on that road. But as we all know, most of our roads, they aren't obeyed very well. And when it's this time of year, crops are planted, you know, the right of way, it makes it difficult to see that curve. And straightening it out and also flattening the hill of the vertical curve should achieve better sight distance. So that's each proven along with the shoulder rumbles are what I'm proposing for the fiscal year twenty seven T SIP grant.
Are, are you looking to keep the intersection in the same place or is that no back further to the west also?
The intersection would be for all purposes, right in the same.
Okay, and then you're basically going straight north.
Yep.
So how much right of way are we talking?
Roughly be about four acres. So it wouldn't be.
No, up a little more, right there. Yeah, straighten that out.
Coming from here off a tangent, off this tangent, straight lining it to here. And eliminating this.
So that curve, curve there has always been an issue as a, a slow spot sinking spot about right in the middle of that curve. But it's always sank right in there somewhere.
And it's rather steep too on the east side of that three ninety-fifth. I mean, it drops up where all those trees are. It's a pretty steep, uh, four slope.
Would there be any desire, because part of a lot of the intercept trouble intersections that I see in the county is when you don't have a ninety-degree intersection. Was there any desire to kind of bring that to the south a little bit? So even when you straighten it out, it's still not a ninety-degree intersection of just bringing that down a little bit. So you have more of that.
I'd be fairly close if we straightened it down.
Yeah, it wouldn't be too much. There's plenty of sight. When you're at this intersection looking south.
You can see all the way through ninety.
There is definitely, I mean, you could see all the way down here by the railroad tracks. It's just right here because as this curves going, as the horizontal curves towards the east, the profile grade, the vertical grade is also rising too. So you know, you're losing sight distance, uh, due to the vertical curve as well. So by straightening it and flattening it, would achieve better sight distance and.
Have we had any discussion with landowners?
No, not yet, just because, you know, us being unsuccessful with the race grant, it would have been a moot point if, if we're unsuccessful at.
I've had questions about it.
Or have you?
Yeah.
Which I'm sure some of them have probably heard with, through the public meetings with the race grant. I'm sure some have been made aware, but I haven't had discussions because if we don't get any of the grants, then we're still going to do the road rehab project where the road's currently at and it's just a moot point.
And basically, that's what the questions are, is safety issues and reasons, you know, and the condition of the road itself right now.
Well, I, I appreciate that and, but I can also see that if I'm the landowner and I'm watching this meeting today and I hear that the county is gonna straighten that road out and take part of my field and stuff, I would like to know that maybe that's a possibility before I see it on, online, because if they get a grant, everything, it's kind of, I want to say a, a seum or whatever. So maybe just a, hey, you know, this is a possibility kind of thing, because.
Yeah, we can, we can reach out because, you know, we won't know about this grant till December, January. So I can definitely reach out to them in the meantime.
Yeah, just as a courtesy, so to speak.
I would make a motion for the fiscal year twenty seven T SIP application for three hundred ninety-fifth Avenue, safety improvements as presented.
I would second that.
Got a motion by Mike, second by Nin to approve the FY twenty seven T SIP application for three ninety-fifth Avenue safety improvements. Any other discussion?
So on, wait, on that, even if you don't get this grant, you're still gonna do road work there?
Yes, correct. We're still gonna do, I met actually last week with, uh, Todd Kenny and, uh, John Bergstrom from the Asphalt Paving Association of Iowa. Because through that one and a half mile stretch of roadway, the sections vary quite a bit as far as the depths of asphalt. I mean, it goes this, through this, I guess I'd call it the subdivision part closer to offshore, where it's only three inches of asphalt. And then on the very north end, the way you get to the golf course, we have like over seven inches of asphalt. So varies quite a bit. So trying to met with them to figure out the best type of rehab option for that road. But long story short, yes, we are planning regardless to do a road rehab. Due to that would not include realignment though.
That would not do. So basically, you would probably do the road rehab, or resurfacing, whenever.
Yeah.
On that, would you do like your rumble strips and all that?
I don't know. It'd be a good, we should be the good steward and probably still do it for safety reasons. It's just, it wouldn't, a grant wouldn't pay for that work and just have to come out of our FM account, but paid to probably be the be nice to show good faith, I guess, even if we don't get a grant to the, or.
To look at costs and all that, but it's something that could be considered, yeah.
Yes, yeah.
All right.
As part of that road, a good portion of it actually is, or what's my typical sections? There is existing paved shoulder out there right now, but I mean, it drops off at the edge of the shoulder, but there is paved shoulder. So, um, it's not like with road rehab, we're only going to do the traveling. We're going to do all that. It's just a matter of milling in rumble strips.
Right. I mean, just where you're saying it kind of drops off steeply on the one side, I think that would be a good, if, if it's feasible to look into.
Isn't something we need to touch base with the Cory people? I mean, obviously there's two Corys up there that they use heavily. Not, doesn't really make any difference. I mean, it's a public road.
Yeah, it's a public road and I mean, we have Corys on like Rockdale Road or a bunch of other roads. It's, we just got to design for the traffic accordingly.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Uh, next is discussion on fiscal year twenty six pickups. So I've all been made aware that, well, Alf totaled their vehicle and they've been borrowing our secondary road truck for a while, um, and they listed, I mean, gave them options as far as, you know, since there's total what they want to do for a new truck. We gave them options within our fleet and it was decided to purchase, or they would like to purchase Rick's truck. Uh, so with that, we sent out bids for that. And during that time, it was also brought to Canyon, uh, the courthouse would like to use that truck as well. But, so first we sent out for bids, three-place Rick's truck. And we sent them out to both Deary's Ford and the one into the Chevy dealership in town. Tills and Rotman's. We received two bids from Rotman's and two bids, one from Rotman's, one from Tills. Uh, did not receive anything from Deary's. And we did change the spec. So for years, it was always like a four-page spec for a truck. And it was essentially specced out as a work truck, but it also took six plus months to get. So I called, uh, Rotman's have historically been our awarded bidder for trucks. So I called them, just asked them, is there anything in particular with our spec that is causing it to be like six months lead time on it? It's not due to any one particular thing. It's just the spec as a whole. It's got to be, it's not a standard truck. It's, it's kind of bare bones, I guess, the best way to put it. So they got to be specially built versus, um, just buying something off the lot. So I reached out to Clinton County to ask what they do, looked at their spec, revised ours accordingly, which so we changed our spec, basically gear, just the standard trim, just what's widely available on the lot. And from what we found out, we, it's actually cheaper that way than what we did in the past. So for example, Rick's truck that he currently has right now, that truck cost us through Rotman's for last year, forty-four thousand, six hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Uh, the low bid this year first, the standard trim model was forty-four thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight dollars. So, so this is a year old, but it's still higher than the standard trim model. It's just, I think it's just, these weren't standard. They had to go make them. So it just costs more. Um, so we received that, Rotman's worth a little bit at forty-four thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight. Tills did submit two bids, one for a truck that was available on the lot that met our spec, but also had additional features above that. But then they also quoted another truck that they could have in six to eight weeks that would be just to meet our, uh, bid, which is about two thousand dollars less than their, uh, one that was available. So the one that was available, forty thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars for one that, with the less features, but still meets our spec is forty-six thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars. So I guess with Health wanting to take Rick's truck and the courthouse wanting the Canyon, I mean, our budget allows it. We would sell those trucks, I should mention too. It's, uh, and I based it on Kelly Bluebug trade-in value, not just private party. I wanted to be fair to other departments and do trade-in value, uh, with that.
So we discussed all this, all these options last week with, with the personnel, I mean, with Public Health and with Lisa and. So I guess that's all on record already as far as what we decided to do when we passed that. Okay. My question would be, um, do, did both dealers or all the dealers realize that they could be, um, providing two trucks? So did, like you talked about, man, had the low bid, did they know the fact that, you know, they could get you two trucks?
So yeah, after, so we already hit the documents. We actually, the bid we opened last Thursday, uh, and by the time we found all this, I didn't want to have to, it was already getting close to that last window. So I didn't want to extend it out. But so since we opened this, we have talked to the dealers and like, we asked Rotman's, for example, do you have like a second one on the lot that would meet that? They did not. They would also have to order one that's about six to eight weeks out. And he told us it'd be roughly, he didn't want to be held to number, be like off the top of his head. It's going to be roughly about two grand more. Because the model that was quoted, or that he quoted as available is a twenty twenty-five. A new one is a twenty twenty-six. And with government rebates between those year models is different. The ones in twenty-five had better, uh, government rebates. So that's why that one's two grand lower. But so long story short, if Rotman's were to get another or second one, they'd be at the same price. So I thought, well, to me, it makes sense to give one to Rotman's and then one to Tills, especially if the second one is going to be right where Tills is, especially since otherwise we'd have to send out literally the same documents for another two weeks to probably get the same numbers.
But is it required when you only bid one vehicle and you need another one? Can you just amend it and try to buy two or do you have to rebid it? That's more accounting stuff. I, I don't know.
I mean, it's a receiver involves more, yeah.
I said, what's your last?
Just wanted to stand corrected. Last week, I think I said that we were going to purchase the Canyon for fifteen thousand. It's actually seventeen thousand. I just, I went back and reviewed and I can see that's what Jayden has included.
So I mean, we did send out codes for one. I don't know if it's mattered to me. I can talk to the dealers.
Does that truly matter accounting-wise if you're taking your two, two lowest bids?
Did anybody else bid?
No, it was just, we're the only two.
You went back to Rotman's. They don't have another one to offer.
You know, what we do is. Well, maybe just give another. We can send out the same document for.
I get it because I mean, you could get a trade for one if you knew you was getting another one or two or another one. I don't know how, how it went. Point is, we now made public what the bids are.
Well, I, I say just to be on the open, I would just send out new stuff.
Stuff for the, or for the Canyon.
That's what I would recommend. I think that would be the most appropriate way to handle it and.
And that's fine, because I mean, it's going to be likely six to eight weeks out for either one in any way. So it's not like.
So obviously we could approve the one because it was a little bit.
Right.
I, I think I'm, I agree with Don. It seems to be a little more transparent to both sides to say. Hey, you know, if you've got something on the lot, you want to trade, get another one. That's up to you.
Right.
So yeah, and then, uh, and that works because then ones that run, the little bit of Rotman's, it's available.
Yeah.
We can get going. So that way, yeah, we can get the trucks transferred over for.
Obviously, we are, we are personnel is.
So yeah, that works, I guess, or, so then with that, I guess we recommend awarding the one truck to, the low bid to Rotman's and then we will send out the same spec document this week and maybe put it out for just a week and a half or whatever. I mean, it's pretty standard, but and do it all.
I would make that motion to approve the low bid pickup, uh, as presented for, um, the one truck.
Wait a second.
Got a motion by Mike, second by Nin to approve purchase of a pickup from Rotman Motors for a total of, I think it was forty-four thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight dollars?
Yes.
Yeah. For a FY twenty-six pickup bid. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
And we still are well within our, within our, like you said, but we're not over at all. So we're still within our budget. So just wanted to clarify that for any questions. Uh, last is a entrance permit for Charles Tim. It's a residential entrance off of four hundred ninety-fifth Avenue in the Van Buren Township with section five. Uh, it's an existing entrance, but he needs a nine-one-one address for, because it's never been through the, there's as many of our driveways. Been there forever, never been addressed, but he needs a nine-one address so he could, uh, get, I think he's getting a well installed, so they need the address. So that's what, it's going to get a sight distance checks. Everything was sufficient there. It already had a existing twenty-four inch, uh, culvert in it. Twenty-four, twenty-four feet wide driveway, eighteen inch tube. So already had a drive or two in it. So uh, no issues on our end. So he recommended approval.
I come off and go.
I would second.
Got a motion by Nin, second by Mike to approve the residential entrance permit for Charlie Tim at four ninety-fifth Avenue, Van Buren Township, section five. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I'd just like to say for anybody who's listening, I guess, or department, within the last month, we have received a ton of rain. Uh, I don't know the exact amount. It varies to where you're at in the county, but we are aware of, there's ed rutting issues, uh, among some of our roads, especially the non-reclaim road, just because they still have the curb there. Uh, and trying to figure out the best way to go forward because I would like to keep the curbs. I don't like the curbs, but until we get to the reclaim, I'd like to keep them there because we do need that material to bring into the road to build up the crown versus just shaving it all off into the four slope or ditch to have to try to get that material back. But with the excessive amounts of rain we've had lately, the water obviously stays channelized and creates a lot of rutting. So we're in the process of fixing all those up, uh, and there's a lot of them to do, but just, I want the public, I guess, just to, we understand, we're trying to do the best that we can, given the conditions that we've been experiencing lately. And going around, there's probably things we as a department could do better as well, but there's, I guess, I'd like to believe a method to our madness for some of the stuff we're doing. But it's just a lot of rain lately is not.
So with three years being into the reclaim, roughly what percentage of roads are done versus what's yet to do?
We're probably at sixty, if I had to pick a number, probably sixty-five percent done throughout the county. And like this week is not, there's going to be no reclaim happening just because.
Too wet.
Too wet and we have a safety meeting actually with all our department right now going on. So for the morning, so the guys, nobody's out there right now, but uh, it's just been really wet lately. There's too much.
Well, to those that haven't had their roads reclaimed, that just know that go out and drive those that have been reclaimed and you'll see the difference. Um, some of the roads that were horrific to travel in such conditions are, um, quite solid, quite drivable. And, uh, we're, we're getting there the best we can. It's just, there's a lot of roads there and it, you know, you know, there's endpoint, hopefully with about a year and a half or so, we've done it all and we're going to go back and dress them again and, and kind of match that crown. And, and, uh, it's a work in progress. There's a lot of roads that needed redone.
Yes, my question to you, Jayden, would be, you know, in watching them reclaim, could we still not knock some of that lip off so that water can get off? Because I think some of these, I mean, yes, we've had excessive, excessive amounts of rain compared to what we normally do. You know, we normally, we only get one of these horrific showers a year, if that, and now we're getting them, it seems like every other week about. But is it possible to knock some of that off and into the ditch? Because we still disc up a large area.
Yes, I.
Versus having two-foot roots in the roadway and.
See, I think a good, happy meeting would be if we could, and I believe the guys have started to do this, but, uh, cut some intermediate notches. And like, if you had a long grade uphill, downhill, whichever you're going, uh, and it's, you do have that, uh, for lack of a better term, curb on the road. If at intermediate points right there, you just cut a little, uh, take the blade and just cut a little notch for a relief for that water to get out. So it's not, you're getting some of it out rather than for a long length of the hill, uh, constantly running down the road. I think that would be a definitely a good start that we should.
I can see that being, uh, some type of advantage. I know we've tried that in the past and obviously when you do that too, it depends on the length that we're talking about, but you need quite a few of them. Otherwise you have a major issue with that notch is that.
You have a major washout there.
Well, I mean, you can't pull one at the bottom of the hill. You gotta put four of them coming down. You know, you can't put one at the bottom and expect all the water. Go out that one. Well, we're going to have a new crack.
Yeah, it's.
Work in progress. I mean.
It's tough. Well.
And I get it, but you know, again, if we got a road that isn't going to be reclaimed for two years and you got major washouts in it, we gotta be doing something there because we can't just say, well, it's going to be reclaimed here eventually. You know, well, a lot can happen in eventually.
It hasn't been reclaimed for forty years. So the fact that we're down to a year and a half or two years out is still an improvement, but yeah.
Well, I'm not saying anything bad about the reclaiming. It's awesome. And as Don said, if you travel any of these roads that have been reclaimed, they're a hundred, they're.
I mean, they're solid.
Percent better. They're solid. You know, obviously the one that was reclaimed last week is getting a little squishy with getting two big showers on it. But again, it's, it's a hundred percent fresh. So you expect that, you know?
Yeah, it's.
Whether permitting, we still anticipate doing some yet as well.
Yes, yeah. I do know we're, I know there's a couple of roads that were scheduled, I think for year one. And due to, you know, Cory's changing hands, all that, we're just gonna fill schedule for year one. We're gonna make it a point to get it done this year. So it's been, if it was warranted to be year, if it was warranted to be performed on year one, we shouldn't wait till year four, then just two dollars heavy price. You just make it, does it mean long line? Yeah, but I guess it's just, it is what it is. It's kind of where I am at. So, uh, we are going to make a point to, on the few, there's, there's a few of them, but go ahead and get those done this year. Even if that means not doing ones that were originally intended for this year, but it's just trying to get caught up. But the ones that were done from year two, I believe we got all those done. It's just, there's ones from year one that, you know, we started year two, we just started with the year two roads and got.
Makes sense.
So keep it up.
So yeah.
Any other questions?
I don't have anything else, I guess.
We appreciate it, sir. Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
All right, Andrew Long, General Administrator, Departmental Update. Good morning.
Good morning.
You, you are welcome. There you are. You're welcome. All right, so we are currently sitting at thirty-four inmates, uh, eight of which are ours and twenty-six are Scott County. Uh, with that, we have, uh, nine females on currently, one of ours, eight of, uh, Scott, the rest are males. Um, July is our busiest month ever, uh, for Jackson County. We actually, one day had forty-five inmates. So again, we talked in theory full at eighty percent. That's ninety percent full. Um, and then looking at our average, we actually averaged forty point three nine per day. So again, averaging above that full point the whole month. Uh, so with that, revenue from Scott County, forty-seven thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollars. Um, so our running total, two hundred and eight thousand, forty-five dollars. Of that, June and July are not yet deposited. I waited to send June when I got our medical bill we were waiting on. And by that point, July had arrived too. So I just sent it all at once. So we should be seeing June and July combined here in a check. Um.
Just out of curiosity, those checks were just like sitting in the office or?
No, we haven't received it yet.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. I didn't bill it yet. Right. I did bill it now, but it hasn't come in yet. So, um, yep, so they are awaiting payment. Um, so in July, then shipping out early on, we're shipping out females due to having more males from Scott County. Um, so in July, we spent two thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars with Delaware County. So that overall ideal of, uh, profit number, uh, would be forty-five thousand, eighty-five dollars for July. Um, so a very, very big month. Um, overall, that brings us to over two hundred and five thousand dollars that's been brought in in revenue. Um, and with that too, we found out with Delaware County, the way they bill is they bill based on the total amount of time the prisoner was there. Most places, including what we do, was bill by calendar date, um, which actually comes out to our advantage. Uh, so we actually saved a little bit of money there with Delaware County since they bill by total time versus, uh, calendar day. So that can help us out even a little more. Uh, so with that, uh, forty people were booked into jail this month. Um, documented checks of the inmates, where they're physically checking the inmates, was at ninety-two thousand, six hundred and nineteen. Um, in comparison, last month was around a little over sixty-three thousand. So, uh, definitely busier as we get more full. Eight thousand, seven hundred and fifteen specific inmate notes and three thousand, sixty-seven meals. So a lot of food. Um, other than that, uh, thank you guys for coming the other day when they did that walkthrough. Uh, Krause was there yesterday looking at that shower room sink. That's the one that we've had problems with on and off repeatedly. They kept kind of talking like, well, we might need to replace this part. And then every time, oh no, we got it fixed. This time they are actually replacing it.
Is that the one that goes into the laundry room on the other side?
Yeah, yeah. So they are actually going to replace the part this time. So hopefully that should help solve the problem with that. Uh, tomorrow, I plan on attending a, a law enforcement, um, behavioral health summit down in Moline or Rock Island, one of the two. Um, talking about the changes in the region. Uh, it's at Robert Young, but it's also, it's for Iowa. Uh, so with that, I'm hoping to find out more about what costs are going to be covered through the region. Uh, it sounds like our inmate medications might now again be paid for by the region. So that will kind of help too on our medical budget. As well as potentially the psychiatric visits on telehealth. So I hope we find out more on that tomorrow. But I'm hoping the state will start picking up the cost of those telehealth visits and the prescriptions. So we shall find out.
Overall inspection, uh, I apologize, I couldn't, I had no commitment, but went well or things are?
Um, for the most part, I'm just a lot of, I don't know if the engineer that came was utterly overly helpful.
No.
They talked about some curb cuts and drainage.
He is the, uh, the one that was always working his magic, if you remember that, Mike.
Oh, yeah. I remember Ripper.
Yeah, so, um, yeah, he wasn't a ton of help, but at least I think everything got kind of out and open documented. Now, Rick did point out a few things when we were kind of doing that walkthrough, uh, like in the administrative side, that window to the lobby. Uh, apparently it should be sealed better than it is. So Rick did at least kind of point that out and Hanson took notes on it. So we'll have to follow up.
Able to address some door issues or at least point them out by this door is leaking again, door is leaking.
We are satisfied with what's going to happen before our warranty's up. Is that what I'm hearing?
What we think is going to happen.
So, um.
As long as.
The bond is.
As long as what that talked about gets done.
Right, yeah. Right, yeah. So just so we don't have to release our bond until we're satisfied, correct? Is that correct? Is that what I'm trying to say?
Yeah.
What am I trying to say? I mean, so far we're covered with.
Right.
The bond, yeah.
How's your fridge working? Have you got it?
We have not gotten it yet. I was waiting for him to get the invoice taken care of with taking the lift gate off. So he's going to get that to us. Um, Jeff said that he could handle moving that. So I'm just waiting for that update from him, um, from Hunter from Rapids. Uh, other than that, hopefully we get that soon and that'll.
And maybe this ain't you, this might be a question for the sheriff, uh, but in the claims this week was a wind stream phone.
That is our phone lines for the sheriff's office. So Karen primarily deals with that. Um, I know she's been having some back and forth with them for quite some time regarding something that was supposed to be free and then they kept billing us for it. So I don't know what she's come to on that. But Karen is the one that handles that phone system.
With that, so one of the questions was, cause we pay for it with credit card, we get charged a fee.
Oh, okay.
If there's a way we can look into, can we get online and get what that bill's gonna be?
Get a direct bill type situation.
Yeah, get it off the line so that we can get it submitted through claims versus paying for it with a credit card and getting charged an extra thirty, forty bucks. You know, it seems petty, but that adds all.
Oh, yeah.
You know, it takes away from something else we can buy, that more useful.
You get with Lisa to make sure we're not paying sales tax. She's still having some incidents where there's sales tax.
Oh, okay. Sorry. I thought we'd gotten that pretty well squared away. So I will get with her.
I know even annually, they want those, the, the renewed, you know, documents to prove intently. So I just.
Oh, sure.
Need to, need to stay on top of.
I mean, going forward, if you got somebody that can do it, you can like, if it's Walmart or whatever, you can take them bills back, submit them to the company and they will reimburse us for that. So.
Even online, there might be a way.
It might be worth. Oh, absolutely. Looking at your back bills for the year and trying to get that back, you know? Still trying to be a good steward for the county.
Oh, absolutely.
You know?
No, but uh, it's nice to hear the jail running at the capacity it is and with relatively little um, difficulty that we hear about. So that's a compliment, uh, you know, compliment to your guys' staff and their commitment to what they're doing. So keep up the good work.
If you have other issues, obviously let us know.
Sounds good.
How many vehicles do you guys, I mean, do you use all the vehicles in the fleet to do transfers? Do you guys need to play a transfer vehicle or two?
Well, so it kind of depends. We have to move them around a little bit and the fact of someone's vehicles in the shop, that kind of thing. Uh, so we have two main ones that we use. Uh, we have, we're being a truck and a Tahoe. Um, Bryce Schmidt typically uses the Tahoe the days he works. Um, and then we also have an old canine squad that's uh, pretty dilapidated, but kind of our backup option. And then we do have that transport van from Clinton County still that we purchased. Gosh, I don't, you probably remember it's wild.
We had four years and we're ready, but. Again, with that, with that unit, we don't transport five, six of them at a time anymore. Is that necessary or is it?
Do we want to keep it? Do we want to get rid of it?
It does have value in the fact of, so for example, when we did transport out three female prisoners, we do need that ability to transport more. Um, and likewise, that is our best option. If we do have, for example, a, a mental health committal, something like that's extremely combative. Uh, you can't kick the windows out and that. So we don't generally use it, but it has value.
You still use that too at Lexi?
I have. I may not need to anymore.
Yeah.
But I have.
But it, it does have value for probably what little we would actually get. I wouldn't say it's an old age. It's, I mean, it's fairly old. So I think it has some value yet for what we would actually get out of it.
I'm just trying to look at different options, you know, for like the sales tax thing, you know, I don't know how many people. If everybody kind of goes and does shopping for you, if you have it limited to just a couple of people.
It depends on the situation. Typically it's limited to a couple of people. However, you know, if something comes up in the middle of the night, oh, we need this real quick, um, or something happens on the weekend, you know, so for the most part, it's fairly limited, but it's not completely limited.
I guess, yeah, kind of, it's like, does everybody that works need a credit card versus if we could get like, I'm just gonna use my hospital experience. We had a Quick Start card that we had assigned to our three rigs.
Sure.
That's what you use for gas.
Mm-hmm.
You know, cause my understanding is that majority was for transport if they needed to fuel up.
Correct.
Out in Des Moines or whatever, um, they could use a credit card to do that, you know, could we? You know, just trying to get a handle on sales tax again, the number of cards that are out there.
Right. Um, we used to, sure, we used to have, at least I can correct me if I'm wrong, we used to have, I believe, one general card that was kept in the safe. People would take it with them if they had to transport. Um, and then it went to issuing individual cards. Was that something that was?
Well, from my understanding, our credit card people we have right now wants the card assigned to a person. But like if we could do it for like a gas card, so a Quick Start card.
Mm-hmm.
Cause Quick Stars pretty much.
Right.
Across Iowa for the most part anyhow, for sure, you know?
Same with Casey's.
I wonder if there's a way that you could set up a government card that doesn't pay the tax or whatever.
You know, maybe, maybe we should look into a Casey's and a Quick Star, you know?
I would say that would be assigned to just them three vehicles or whatever, or whether they're in a sleeve there on the wall that as you're going to leave, you take the card and, you know?
And I had.
Like we just, we just, at the hospital, we stored it in one of them credit card sleeves right there on the dash. So
Sure.
You didn't have to remember to grab the card as you're walking out with an inmate, you know?
Well, and I want to say Clinton County does something along those lines with their deputies that they have gas cards.
Mm-hmm.
I don't believe they use like a central county pump. So I think they have something similar to that setup.
You know, and then maybe, you know, we could kind of have your top, whatever, maybe, what do we call your lead?
The ship lead people.
Ship lead people, maybe they are assigned the card. And then if something needs over the weekend or, you know?
Sure.
Just trying to get a handle on.
Yep.
Again, running it by, you know, it's gonna work, not work. I mean, I don't, I don't want to make changes and then you guys go, this absolutely won't work.
No, I think what you're saying would work. So, yeah.
But.
Um, and then the other thing is, and I guess with transports, if it's a gas card, we can narrow it down more. The other issue that we ran into why part of doing individually was the accountability and if they don't turn in a receipt, who's gonna pay it?
Right.
Cause I think I paid several that definitely were not my purchases.
Right.
That someone didn't turn in a receipt. So, um, that was part of that accountability to it. Um, now with the gas card, we can go back and see very easily on our computer system who did the transports. So that's simple enough to do. Um, but I don't think that would be a problem. So.
Well, definitely their responsibility to turn in a receipt. That's, that's.
And you can go back and look. Yes, there was definitely a transport.
This day.
This day, at this timeframe.
I mean, there was, there was a fair amount of invoices on the card of this uh, claims period. And you know, there's a couple of them stuck out to me and then maybe they, again, it's probably not you, it's probably more the sheriff because it was forty-nine, whatever. But we get charged very frequently on tire rotation. And I always thought when I bought tires, that was free rotation for the life of the tire. But I mean, it's sticky tacky again, but Brent was here a while ago, even during uh, bucket season and saying, you know, they change our tires from winter to summer for free and, and we get charged for changing tires. Also, I'm back and forth. I don't know, but it's just a check with, yeah, they, huh?
It would, you know what the business is that I can ask him?
I do.
Okay. If you want to just let me know that sometime and I'll look into it and see if I can find out. So, yeah. And I will ask him about that.
Yeah, we got other ones, again, trying to be good stewards. If we got other ones that aren't charging us for a tire rotation.
Mm-hmm.
I understand the whole tire.
It's not a lot, but yeah, I, I assume that when I bought tires, they, they take, you know, come back and get it rotated whenever.
Times is just a good, the oil changer.
Yeah, right.
Um, just one question. Do you have like a supply person in charge to make sure you have minimal or a certain level of supplies?
Um, in, in a couple of different senses. So uh, like Jeff brings over like the paper products, that kind of a thing. Um, Dan sells or usually if it's something that we're doing as far as cleaning supplies, it's not provided by the county, you know?
Well, I'm just more thinking like, cause there's been a couple of incidents where, hey, we're out of this.
Mm-hmm.
And it comes out on the weekend. Do you have somebody that's over there during the week? This is, we need a certain level of supplies to should get us through the weekend.
Um.
Um. Cause I think, I don't know if Jeff necessarily knows.
Sure.
Which is gonna be used. So I didn't know if you had somebody like a supply person that could, that's part of their job is okay. On Thursday, this is where we're at. Hey, we're gonna need something to get us through the weekend kind of thing or.
So trying to avoid the.
The need over the weekend.
Yeah.
But more often than not, like if there's a need over the weekend, it's a sudden, hey, we've got to go get this prescription from Walmart. It's, or we need to get this medication from Walmart.
Yeah, paper, paper towels.
Oh, have we?
Yeah.
I guess I wasn't even tracking that. So.
So.
Yeah, I, I just.
Like that.
Sure.
You know?
Um, yeah, so that, I guess I wasn't tracking that. So I'll take a look at that too, because yeah, we shouldn't have that.
Well, I, I think it'd just be somewhere you could say, hey, you know, we need a case of whatever, you know?
Kind of like how you do your food, you know? Obviously you got somebody, I'm assuming anyhow, that's going, we need to order milk, we need to order.
Correct.
Peanut butter, we need to order whatever, you know?
Yep.
Obviously tedious for Jeff to jump in it.
Oh, yeah, I mean.
Oh, yeah, I wouldn't expect.
Fifty million other places.
Oh, absolutely. I would expect him.
See somebody, you know, maybe they can do inventory during the evening when it's not quite as busy that we're not taking people to the.
Yeah.
Yeah, that should be. Yard and all that stuff, you know?
Yeah. Yeah, well, we can do that easy enough. Um.
Anything else for Andrew?
Don't mean to be bombarding you with all these.
Oh, you're dying.
Yeah, that's the time to burn things.
I guess that's why we have the meetings in the.
We're thinking about that, you know?
And this, Jay, what's being done and how you're running. I haven't heard anything and that's a good thing, I think.
Right.
Really have not heard any complaints and I've heard that.
And these figures are awesome and.
Well, and this.
Who knows to everybody over there because they're doing a good job.
And this might be viewed to some as nitpicky stuff, but it's awesome that these are the biggest problems we have to deal with.
Oh, absolutely.
Yes, so I think it's a sign that everything's kind of running pretty good and we're just kind of cleaning up the people's worky details.
Like I already said, if an inspector came in and dig me or bug in the light, that's a good thing. Cause then you find another thing. So.
Right, absolutely. Yep. So I will follow up on those things and I'll talk to Karen about that wind stream bill too and see what we can do to get that direct bill. So.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you much.
You bet.
Thanks, Andrew.
Yeah, have a good one.
Next up, we got visitors and citizens. Anybody online? Or nobody is here? I can't see. Usually it says one person or whatever, but. Nope, nope. Moving on, Lisa.
Good morning. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the August fifth, twenty twenty-five board proceedings as written by Auditor Smith and authorized publication in the official newspapers.
So moved.
Okay.
Got a motion by Nen second by Mike to approve the minutes of the August fifth, twenty twenty-five board proceedings as written by Auditor Smith and authorized publication in official newspapers. Any other discussion? Although the favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Need a motion to approve and authorize the auditor's office to issue warrants in the publication of the claims listing in the amount of three hundred and forty-seven thousand, fifty-five dollars and seventy-three cents.
Move to approve.
I will second that.
Motion by Mike, second by Nen to approve and authorize the auditor's office to issue warrants and publication of the claims listing in the amount of three hundred and forty-seven thousand, fifty-five dollars and seventy-three cents as presented. There was quite a bit of rock in there and a couple of contracts, but nothing really out of the ordinary, so to speak.
Beginning of the year.
Yep.
Invoicing that, that's okay.
All those in favor say aye. Aye, motion carries.
I'll go ahead for the board today.
Ms. Luay.
Morning.
Good morning.
Morning, morning.
Okay. All I have is the calendar, but it is pretty busy. So uh, this afternoon at three thirty is the McCocon River Watershed Management Authority Executive Committee meeting by Zoom for Don. Um, Wednesday, tomorrow, August thirteenth is Don's turn on KMAQ's Just Talk program at nine o'clock. At one P M is a zero to five and sixty minutes meeting or a family advisory committee meeting. I'm not quite sure how they distinguish those by Zoom for Nen. At four o'clock tomorrow was the Veterans Affairs Commission, um, meeting in the community room for any of you. Um, four thirty tomorrow, I tentatively have a Port of Eastern Iowa meeting by Zoom for Nen. And at five thirty, I have a HACAP, uh, special meeting by Zoom for Mike. Thursday, August fourteenth at ten A M is a Mississippi Valley Workforce Business Committee meeting by Zoom for Don. And on Friday at noon is a DCAT meeting by Zoom for Mike. Monday, August eighteenth, um, the eighteenth, the nineteenth and the twentieth is the downtown assessment from McCocon. Um, I think, I think I had to talk to Kelly about those. I'm not sure. Um, the, there's activities all three days. Um, Monday, August eighteenth at one o'clock, I tentatively have a waste authority meeting. I don't have a confirmation on that. At the transfer station for Mike. At three P M on Monday is a Eastern Iowa Mental Health and Disability Services meeting in Davenport for Jack. And at seven o'clock that night is a zoning committee meeting, uh, commission meeting in the community room, um, downstairs for any of you. Our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, August nineteenth at nine A M. Um, that day also at one thirty is a uh, safety committee meeting downstairs for Nen. Um, at four o'clock, Mike has an Isaac's Executive Committee meeting in Des Moines. At four o'clock is a virtual aging and disability town hall meeting by Zoom for any of you. Um, at five o'clock, we tentatively had a Jackson County Economic Alliance meeting is looking, it's canceled. I think they removed that to September. So. Also at five o'clock is a conservation board meeting at Hurstville for any of you that want to attend that. And by the end of the week, you'll all be in Des Moines for the Isaac's Annual Conference for a couple of days.
Cool.
Anything else?
Thank you much. Good. Words and commissions.
Oh, I see that the insurance company has sent um, a update to Brian Kersberg and the uh, I think they're settled, pretty much all settled and they should be receiving a check soon. So hopefully you'll see action on that building.
Cool.
I have a fair amount of questions on it and I said, we're.
It is amazing how they kind of get asked about.
Did, did make a phone call to the insurance company. They realized we're losing revenue every day. So let's move along here and make a decision.
But they have to send out or rebuilding or?
So. As far as bids, you mean?
Yeah.
No, that was all done already. Yeah, so they didn't have to go through the architect engineering because same physical. So we went through the attorneys and made sure that we were able to use the same exact building and the, and the contractor move things forward quicker, we hope.
No, last night was together we build advisory board meeting. Um, everything's going pretty good, you know, rentals are slowly increasing, but they're still there. Buildings getting used more and more. Um, they did approve a lease for somebody, I forgot the name, what is the name of that?
Amazing.
Amazing grades.
Grades.
Um, they're gonna come in on Thursdays. If people will order meals, they'll make them and then they'll freeze them and they'll, they can pick them up on Sundays. Um, that's gonna help out a lot. Gonna use the kitchen to keep, keep it going. Um, we'll see how that goes for the next few months.
They're leasing or renting the kitchen and that better.
And what's that?
Community room, man.
Just basically the kitchen is.
Basically the kitchen and they're gonna come in that, that east door.
Okay.
Pick up the meals on Sunday, Sunday morning during designated times and things like that. So that'll be a, I want to start as soon as possible. So it should be starting here. Um, they will talk to you because um, they were asking with this person being there on Thursday from five to seven, being there on Sunday would be possible if they could get issued a key. So Terry will talk to you about that.
Is the Together We Build Board, everybody okay with it? So as long as you have, I mean, we know that there's approval from the board, then.
Yeah, it was approved last night.
Well, I guess the only other question would be, i- is they considered a vendor or they considered it's a pro, uh, nonprofit? Or how did they do it as far as like in insurance wise, as far as coming in and using the building and the kitchen and?
Well, I would, she should have to show.
Insurance.
Like a renter or anybody else.
Yeah.
She hasn't done that yet?
Not that I know of, but she has.
She, it was proposed to the board, would we be willing to do this? And A to get the kitchen utilized and B to create a revenue stream.
I'll make sure that that's relayed on.
Yeah. I did the agreement or lease or contractor.
She'll be signing a, a.
We did a three-month contract.
Contract, basically just like if you're renting it, she'll be signing that way. And that is part of that agreement that you have to show that. So.
Mm-hmm.
I'll remind, make a reminder that. I'll remind, make a reminder that she's.
And who's doing this again?
Amazing Grace, Grays, not Grace, Grays.
G R A Z E.
Okay, and who can we expect to come into the office for?
I don't know, Terry will get ahold of you on that.
The biggest thing I wanted to say is.
I don't know.
They. When it comes to keys, the Fairgrounds is management of that building. Any key request should come from them, I don't want.
Okay.
Us or somebody else, yeah, I want to keep that kind of like a, a single avenue.
Yeah, we don't want to just hand out a key.
Um, the one exciting thing is after a phone call and several correspondence and emails and things like that, and Peak Construction showed up and. There was a guy that worked with Peak Construction that took another job and left for almost a year, but then he came back about three months ago. He came over and looked at it and he said, these door jams are wrong, these seals are wrong, and. According to, uh, Amber and them, uh, the last couple of rainstorms didn't make it through the doorway, so, uh.
The solid doors.
On the solid doors, the aluminum doors, you get the steel doors, um. As of now, are relatively dry through rain, so that was a positive things, they're tweaking a few other things, but, uh. Um, they ordered some.
They were shot back in water out.
Yeah. And, uh, so that's, that was a, that was a positive thing on that, um. I know we sat through the R T A meeting and we have that hand out there, if you have any thoughts about it, I'm meeting. Uh, Chandra and May tomorrow at eleven thirty to talk more about it, to see where the county stands as far as filling the gap. So.
Um, yeah, no, I, I mean, I have some thoughts on it, I can relay, but, I mean, it's tough, obviously, I think. Until we get complete input from all sides here, that we're not gonna be, uh, filling gaps until. Where belts can be tightened and what.
I, I, I agree, so I'm just letting you know that's going on, so, um, that's all I got. Uh, as far as looking down at some of our unfinished business with the Fairgrounds lease. Didn't we pretty much pass out everything? Off there.
Yeah.
Um. I guess the senior center. Where were we at with that one? Cause I thought we kind of agreed, we paid it to, I mean.
I don't know that we have a lease.
Right.
Official.
Who needed, was that over at John's or? The drawing up.
I think so, yeah, I mean, I just think our contractor or lease with. Um, any I three A, you know, they sent us the, the notice to discontinue.
And so you can take any I three A off there because there is no lease. Uh, the farm lease is coming up and Historical Society, I saw the email yesterday talking about their moth problem and. Uh, I'm assuming at some point they're gonna come to us or.
I think they're having a meeting to discuss, I think, don't they? I would guess that they're gonna have to, but yeah, as a board.
Yeah. So if we can follow up on, you know, Historical Society too. Uh, I don't know what the solar energy projects is, I mean, other than were you gonna look to see if you can get the app to see if it's. When we were out there taking pictures. You were talking to. What's his name that come in? He could see how much of solar panels you're producing.
Oh, Griffin?
Yeah.
I was not going to, I suspected that somebody from M M U could just tell me what our savings are. And I would assume it can't be that hard, but.
We have the ability to, um, Cracker has that.
Would, look in and see if they're producing energy.
Yeah, he has it, he should have it on his computer because I gave him all of the information. At one point, he was looking at, I don't know how often he does, but, um, there is. Yeah.
So, with that, I'll follow up on it, I'd just be curious to see. Yeah. Um, so if we could. I don't know, can we contact John about the senior center lease, just to, I don't know what stipulations are. That we need to get that finalized, just so. You know.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm assuming we still leave them, correct?
I would think since they're in the building every day, I would say, yeah, if they were to find who pays what, they. Specifically, again, we talk about insurance requirements.
And should the Historical Society lease be with the Fairgrounds instead of us, is there a subletting?
That's what we're talking, or at least that we have verbally, there's. Is not in effect because it, it sets out the insurance requirements that we're not adhering to. So, yes, there should be, there should be a contract or lease between the Historical Society and the Fairgrounds. Um, and I know at one point that was in the works, but I don't know if it still is or not.
Cool.
Well, and I think John was going to help set that up, right?
Yeah.
To help spell that out. Yes. So maybe we need to check with John on them too.
We can just kind of clean that stuff up. All right, anything else for the good of the meeting?
No, I think I'm good. Okay, the business said make a motion to adjourn.
Second that.
Motion by Mike, second by Nen to adjourn, any other discussion? Those in favor say aye. Motion carries, have a great day.